The meeting is ready to call to order, council.
Okay. And do we record closed session?
No, but we had to record this part of the meeting and that stuff.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
So you may call the meeting to order, mayor.
Oh, I could, the meeting is called now called to order. Would you call the roll, please?
Just as a reminder, please indicate your physical location when I call your name. Councilmember Wilcoxen.
Is it, uh, city of Ypsilanti, Washington County?
Mayor Proton Brown. Councilmember Somerville.
President city of Ypsilanti, Washington County.
Mayor Richardson.
President city of Ypsilanti, Washington County.
Councilmember Morgan.
President city of Ypsilanti, Washington County.
Councilmember Simmons. Mr. Jones Chance.
President city of Ypsilanti County, Washington.
Five present Thursday, four.
Thank you.
I move to excuse Mrs. Simmons and Mrs. McGee, I guess it is now.
Four.
No way, no way. If she's in Puerto Rico, I don't think I'm.
So council will need a vote on the, uh, on the.
Do we have a sec?
A second.
Yes, it was, yep.
Okay, this is the second. Would you call, uh, all in favor of the excusing?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So they are excused. Okay.
Uh, council, the next item on the agenda is the agenda approval.
Motion, please.
Summer.
Oh, I would like to make a, a just, well, I would like to make an addition to the, to the, to the agenda. That's okay. I, I would, I would like to move to add a ten minute discussion about boards and commissions at the end of the meeting, a ten minute maximum. If someone wants to support that.
I'd support that.
Okay, it's been moved and supported to add a ten minute discussion of boards and commissions to the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I said aye, I said aye.
Okay, I didn't, Mr. Wilcoxen, did you vote?
I did.
Oh, did you? Okay, I didn't hear you. Okay, it's been moved, so we will add boards and a ten minute discussion of boards and commissions to the agenda.
Good, council, next item on the agenda is closed session.
Motion to go into closed session.
I've moved to go into closed session.
Support.
It's been moved, it's supported to go into closed session. All in favor?
Mayor, this will be a roll call vote.
This is a roll call. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Five yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
We are in closed session.
Thank you, Lori and Kim.
Thank you. Lori, did anyone ever tell you, you look like, uh, our former mayor, I mean, our former governor?
Oh, Jennifer Grant?
Yeah.
I can't say I've heard that one.
When I first turned it on tonight and I saw you there, I said, wait a minute, what's Jennifer doing here?
Nope, not me.
Well. You've heard it now.
Okay.
Okay.
Bye, everybody. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye. Great night, Lori.
Council will need that motion to reconvene.
I've moved to reconvene in open session.
Support.
It's been moved and supported to reconvene in open session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's three.
I heard three. I, I need at least one more.
Aye.
Thank you. In the meeting? Okay, uh, thank you. The meeting is now open.
Council, the next item on the agenda is public comments. There is currently one individual under public comment. If you'd like to make comment, please raise your hand. You'll have three minutes to address council. Seeing no hands raised, if council would like to move on to the next section.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, Tua Kalanga.
I just want to note that the, the person, the attendee, Lucas Larson, is the, uh, the, reporter for M Live and, and.
I can stay right there.
Headset the moment, head, headset them. Preferably, anyway.
Oh, wow.
Council, the next item is presentations, and under that is a proclamation in honor of Native American Heritage Month, sponsored by Mayor Richardson. Whereas Native American Heritage Month began as a commemorative week that was first introduced in nineteen eighty-six, from November twenty-third through thirtieth by President Reagan, and whereas since nineteen ninety-five, every president has issued an annual proclamation designated the month of November to celebrate Native Americans and Alaskan natives, and whereas Heritage Month was a time to educate the public about tribes, to raise aware, general awareness about the challenges native people have faced both in the past and present, and ways in which they have conquered those challenges. And whereas Heritage Month is also a time to educate the public on the contributions of Native Americans made to the community structure, medicine, government, systems, and the environment. And whereas according to the U.S. Census Bureau, there are six point seven nine million Native Americans in the United States. Of that total, the state of Michigan has a total of fifty-three thousand, three hundred and sixteen among its population. And whereas the state of Michigan currently has twelve federally recognized Indian tribal groups. And whereas the state of Michigan is fortunate to have a great population of Native Americans that has impacted its landscape, culture, history, politics, and economy. And whereas it is important to highlight and recognize achievements of Native Americans as they continue their efforts in enhancing our communities. Now therefore, I, Lois Allen Richardson, mayor of the city of Ypsilanti, hereby proclaim November twenty-twenty-one as Native American Heritage Month.
Thank you.
Council is ready, we can move on to the next section, consent agenda. Resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash two four eight, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that the following items be approved. Resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash two four nine, approving the minutes of November second, twenty-twenty-one. Resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash two five zeros, approving appointment of boards and commissions. Resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash two five one, approving the appointment of a delegate and alternate to the Washington County Regional Resources, Resource Management Authority, one.
I'll move. Support.
It's been moved in support. Any discussion?
No discussion on the consent agenda. I'll leave the rule now. Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
The five yes, the motion carries. Council, on to the next item. Resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash two five two, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the Ypsilanti Arts Commission has requested through resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash zero six, the implementation of a community and artist survey. And whereas the Arts Commission has drafted a request for qualifications to be released in order to secure a third party for survey implementation. And whereas the purpose of the survey would be to collect data from the community about the arts to inform the commission in its role with the city, and share this data with local, state, and national arts organizations, providing insight on the current state of the arts in Ypsilanti. And whereas the commission has acquired funding for survey implementation through a Tremaine Foundation grant. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Ypsilanti direct the city manager to facilitate the release of the RFQ and act as judiciary for the payment of the selected firm.
Moved.
Port.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion or questions?
Council, the chair of the commission is here, if you have any questions.
Okay. Hello, is that, uh, Ms. Deneen?
Yes, I'm Gina. I'm Gina. How are you?
Good, how are you? And how do you pronounce your last name?
My last name is Thompson, but the, that's Gina Deneen, my middle name, Gina Deneen, this is my email.
Gina Deneen, okay. All right, thank you. Uh, and welcome to our, uh, welcome to our table. Okay.
Thank you.
Um, would you like to present or have any words for us on this particular, uh, resolution?
Um, so I'm just here as the chair, and we had a committee that put together, um, this survey, and the gentleman who is, was on the committee is going to, um, present, but I was recently voted chair, so I wanted to, um, attend with him and, you know, smile at, smile at the people and, and just know, we haven't done, um, we haven't done any presentation at all. We started, uh, in August during the pandemic of twenty-twenty, and we've been working on some things, but as you know, it was quite choppy last year, so we're just sort of getting down to the nitty gritty right now. Aaron is, uh, is Aaron, uh, it's Aaron Seagraves that we're expecting. Is he?
I'm here, I'm here now.
Cool. We have a little group of people who's working really well together, and this is Aaron. He's in charge of the, uh, Community and Artist Survey Outreach Consultant Program.
All right, thank you. Nice to meet you, Gina, and Aaron, nice to meet you, and, um, I hear you have a presentation for us.
I, I can, uh, give a brief bit of background, um, and if there's any questions, I can answer, but yes, uh, so when the, the commission started in twenty-twenty, we, one of the first projects we wanted to do, we, we discussed doing is having an artist survey. And, um, to get some information from the community and to, you know, to get some data from artists. So, in thinking more about that, we looked at some examples, and one of them was Artists Thrive, which is like, uh, a survey that exists, uh, that's open for artists to conduct themselves and kind of get some more information about themselves, as like a self-assessment. So I reached out to them, and they are organized and funded by the Tremaine Foundation. And through that conversation, they offered to fund, like seed money to implement an artist survey locally. And, so as part of that, that money, which was four thousand dollars, outreach was determined to be like something that would be needed and helpful for, to increase participation in a local survey here. So that's sort of what's on the agenda for you tonight is to approve the request for qualifications for, uh, an outreach consultant to help, get the word out on the survey locally and spread the news about it, and to, uh, basically to staff, to staff the, uh, attendant, to attend like different artist events and things like that, and community events, and to network, uh, things of that nature. So hopefully we can increase the participation, get a lot of good information, and to provide some direction for the, uh, art commission going forward. So, uh, I don't know if there's any questions about the information in the agenda, or if there's anything else, but that's, this, that's the, uh, quick, quick summation of our, of our project.
Any questions or discussion from any council? Uh, yes, uh, councilmember Morgan.
This is more of a, of a comment, and I, I thank you, uh, guys for being here from the Arts Commission, and, and I, I later in, in, in the, in the agenda, we're gonna have a discussion about boards and commissions, uh, because I believe, uh, commissions seeking to find more, um, more, more, more robust definition of finding how to increase, um, connectivity and engagement with their respective, uh, fields. I think those things are constant, and can, and continue to diversify, and, um, and, and, and to diversify and create a, a face that's inclusive in the city, and I think all of the commissions are, are tasked with that, and so I appreciate the Arts Commission coming, uh, finding direction through a third party, or whatever they have to do to get back into the community to determine how they can make the commission more viable. So I'm appreciative of this, and, uh, and I support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, well, thank you, uh, Aaron, and thank you Gina for coming to, uh, to share with us. And we're gonna call the, uh, roll on this and take a vote, seeing no hands for questions or discussion. Uh, Mr. Halanga.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
The five yes, the motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you again for coming, and, uh, if there's anything we can do to help support what you're doing, please continue to reach out to us.
Gina.
And thank you for your service.
I, I will say that, uh, it is our goal to be around a little bit more, and so you'll be seeing, uh, one of our faces most of the time.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you.
Council, moving on to the next resolution. Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash two five three, it is resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that the grant agreement with the Washington County Prosecutor Attorney for twenty-five thousand for support of expungement program is hereby approved, and the mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign for and on behalf of the city, subject to the approval of the city attorney.
I've moved.
Been moved, support. It's been moved and supported. Uh, questions, discussion? This is something. Miss, go on, uh, councilmember Morgan.
I'll have one comment, and I just want to thank, uh, well, I know that, uh, as this city, uh, the prosecutor attorney was on, and they said they started the program, they had twenty-five thousand dollars, and it seemed as if we matched that, and I'm grateful in Washington County, and had it not been for the four-eight, one-nine-eight, and one-nine-seven, I would say I would specifically urge the county prosecuting office to urge all the other cities within the county that promote marijuana to do the same thing, and, 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 and find ways to make this, uh, expungement program more practical, um, and, and have a little bit more weight to it, if the other cities, again, within Washington County, support like Ypsilanti has done, took the lead in this, because we believe in it. So, uh, I'd just say thank you, uh, for Annie Somerville, who actually helped bring this to the table, um, but I definitely think, um, since it's something that's helping four-eight, one-nine-seven, and one-nine-eight, the people who are most marginalized in the county, um, that the other parts of this, uh, county who actually double up on marijuana should do the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Jones Chance?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Ms. Somerville for bringing this up as well, and, um, uh, I hope that we, you know, since we're focusing here on the fourteen-eight-two district court and the, you know, citizens of the city of Ypsilanti, that when we get that report, we can use that, you know, if we decide to, uh, do more of this in the future, we can use that to gauge how effective we're being, and, and how many of our residents that we're actually helping. So I hope we'll, we'll use the, the data and the reports that they give us.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? I would, okay, Mr. Wilcoxen?
Uh, it just seems to address all the issues that, uh, in the conversation we had at the last meeting, so, you know, again, thank you, Andy.
Yeah.
I really look forward to, uh.
Your, your voice is getting muffled.
All right, I'm, I'm looking forward to contributing to this, because I think this was, was a key part of, uh, you know, our intent in going through with the, adult use ordinance, um, was this, and I think, you know, being able to contribute to this is significant.
Thank you. Uh, I'd also like to thank, um, councilwoman Somerville for, uh, bringing this to council, and, um, I am in total support of it. The expungement, um, process has been really active here in Ypsilanti for a number of years now. I remember, oh gosh, several, several years ago, uh, Judge Thomas out of Detroit did the first expungement, um, workshop at, uh, up at Brown Chapel, uh, oh gosh, probably about seven, eight, or maybe lot more than that, years ago. But I'm glad that we're able to contribute, uh, financially to this project going through the prosecutor's office. So, uh, did you have anything you wanted to say, um, Ms. Somerville?
Uh, no, just thankful that everyone's supportive of this effort, and hopefully we can, um, continue to help people get their records expunged.
All right, thank you, and with that, Mr. Halanga, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion, motion carries with five yes, yes, and two absent.
Thank you.
Council, moving on to the next resolution. Resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash two five four. It is resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that the dispatch contract of Washington County be extended to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, on the same terms and conditions. The mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign the extension agreement, subject to the approval of the city attorney.
Motion and support?
I'll move. I'll support.
Okay. It's been moved and supported. Um, any discussion on this?
Uh, just a small, I'm sorry, mayor.
Mr. Morgan?
It's, it's kind of funny to me. I, I, I don't know how business get done sometimes, when it says it's open-ended for over eleven years, and now we're gonna extend it for two months. Um, and, and if it's that important, we should just extend it for a long, or are we determining of, in the short term, whether we're gonna use the services in the future? So I don't know what, I, I, I don't, I don't understand the urgency, or what, what it means to do this short term, um, the short-term contract, and so, and I don't know how it could be open, and we're still either paying seventy-five thousand dollars a year when it's open-ended, like an open account, would we just take it? Or somebody signing off on it, but either way, uh, if we're gonna use those services and we need them in the future, this is just a preemptive, uh, piece of paper that we're gonna have to extend in the future, uh, but either way, I'm gonna support it, because, um, obviously, we've, we've been needing it.
Okay, I see Mr. Bar is, uh.
I think I can probably send some way that.
Okay, well, let, let's see, um, well, Mr. Bar disappeared, so I thought he had something he wanted to say, but go ahead, chief.
Oh, um, we started using Washington County's dispatch services back in two thousand and nine. This was, uh, extended once before, um, without changing the terms of the contract in two thousand and seventeen. So there was an end date of this past June thirtieth, and, uh, for some, for a lot of different technical reasons, that the renewal of that, uh, or the first extension took some time to get, uh, to council. And that's where, where we're at now. To answer council member Morgan's, uh, question, the next resolution, I believe, is gonna be for an additional extension from, uh, January first to June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-two. The reason for that extension is to get, uh, the increases in the contract going forward to be in line with our, our budget cycle, as opposed to when the county would levy the bill, uh, in the calendar year. Again, the second extension that's coming, that will be, uh, before you next, is again, no increasing costs. However, um, there have been some increases in costs to the sheriff's office, uh, as well as a new facility that they, they, uh, that they built for, specifically for the dispatch function, so from twenty-twenty-two moving forward, uh, for the next six years, I think there's a letter included in the packet, there are some increases, uh, averaging right around nine percent a year going out to twenty-twenty-six. And to answer your question about continuing to use their service, um, this is really, uh, a cost savings to us. If we were to put up our own dispatch, we would pay more than this in just salaries to cover the, the time, and, uh, back in two thousand and nine, we got rid of all the equipment, so the purchase of the equipment would be, um, cost prohibitive for us to go back to doing our own dispatch.
Can I, can I ask a question, chief? This is, this is a sidebar question. When we, when we out-service our dispatch, uh, to Washington County, do we out-service the quality of policing to them also, in, in our name? So if they're replying for us, are they stepping out into the community under the guise of Ypsilanti?
Yes, I, I would say that, that, that is true. Um, when people dial, uh, from our city to the dispatch, they, they don't sometimes even realize who they're talking to, so they do think that they're talking to Ypsilanti police. I can tell you that my tenure here, we have not had very many situations where people complained about the dispatch service, and every time it was brought to our attention, it was brought to the attention of the sheriff's office, and they took care of whatever the, the issue was. So we've been very happy with their service. They're very professional. Uh, the sheriff's office does a really good job for us.
I agree, and I concur. Thank you so much, chief.
I would just like to, uh, to add that the, uh, the open house and, uh, everyone on council should have received an invitation to, um, the open house. It was, I believe, it was last Thursday or Friday. It's, uh, for the new facility, and I did attend that, and it is absolutely, it is fantastic. It is unbelievable. And I did not realize the extensive need for security for, um, the emergency service center, but that place is locked down. Uh, when it's, when it's, will fa- finally open, uh, they are, well, they haven't totally moved service, um, from there yet, to there yet, but, uh, if there happens to be another time that it's open, uh, for, uh, uh, someone to go through, please, uh, it's fantastic, and I think that it's worth, um, it made me realize that the funds that we're paying is definitely worth it. We're getting, uh, the money, that we're getting our money's worth. Also, when we did join, uh, the county dispatch services, uh, they hired all of the dispatchers that we had that were working for the city, if they wanted to go. And I did see one or two of those, um, dispatchers there when I was there for the open house, but, um, I think we're, I, I believe that we're in very, very good hands, but it's state-of-the-art equipment that they have. They can see what's going on, not only around their building, but throughout the county, all with all the screens right there in front of them, so, uh, I don't think that we could have done, could do any better, so. I'm supporting this. Mr. Wilcoxen?
Thank you, mayor. Um, I have a, a couple operational questions. I, I also support that, that is, is a good thing. So, out of, out of the communities surrounding, i- in the county, um, are all the communities using, uh, the sheriff's office for dispatch? Or, or do some of those retain that? And the second question is, does this pose any delay in response time? Well, there's three questions, so that's the second question. Third question is, um, does this, does this make it easier for the collaborative responses that we have with EMU and the surrounding communities?
Okay, so I think there's three parts to that question. I'll try and, I may forget one, and somewhere in the.
I'll, 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 that's fine, sorry.
So, uh, to answer your question, most communities in the county, uh, are using the sheriff's office for their dispatch. I believe that the city of Celine is still, has their own, uh, EMU still dispatches their own people on campus. So, I think they may, and I think that the city of Chelsea also has their own dispatch. Uh, but other than that, everyone right around us, uh, all gets dispatched to the sheriff's office, Ann Arbor, Pittsfield, um, ourselves, we're, we're all, uh, in that same central dispatch. Uh, and I think it does help facilitate some of the interagency action, um, because being centralized, we have the east side and the west side split up, uh, so all the east side are on certain channels, all the west side are on certain channels. So you're on the same frequencies, you can hear what's going on around you, um, based on where you're at in the, in the county. And we also have the ability to scan, so you can actually hear everybody that, everything that's going on in the county that. And we also have the ability to scan, so you can actually hear everybody that, everything that's going on in the county that the sheriff's office dispatches. And I, I knew I'd forget one. There was another part of your question.
No, that's it. I covered it. It, it, it was basically the, the collaborative responses, but if EMU is, is scanning versus...
And there's no, there's no lag time in, in response. In fact, our response time is very, very good. It's, it's really no different than if they were calling into our building. They're dispatching the cars directly from the sheriff's building right via radio to our cars and our cars are going. So there's really, if there's any negligible amount of time, um, in lag time.
Cool. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief. Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, Mr. Hulenga, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yeses and one absence.
Thank you. And welcome, uh, Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you. Sorry, I was late today.
That's okay. It happens. Yes. Just glad you joined us.
Moving on to the next resolution, council, we have resolution number twenty twenty-one dash two-five-four A. It is resolved by the council of the city of Ipsilanti that the dispatch contract with Washtenaw County be extended to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two on the same terms and conditions. The mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign the extension agreement subject to the approval of the city attorney.
Support. I'll move.
Okay, so we, we, we got the support before we got the motion. Okay. Uh, it's been moved and supported. Uh, any questions or discussion? I think, Mr. Morgan, I think this answers your question possibly.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Pardon my ignorance. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Welcome. Seeing no hands, um, would you call the roll, Mr. Hulenga, please?
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yeses, one absence. Council, moving on to the next resolution.
Uh, Laura Kalinga, I've got a, a technical issue. I wonder if, uh, Councilmember Simmons will, you tell us her location, please?
Oh, thank you. Yes, um, attending, uh, virtually from the city of Ypsilanti, county of Washtenaw. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Please pardon my divine illumination.
I thought you were being visited by extraterrestrials, huh?
Pardon my glow, sir.
You've got such a great aura tonight, Anthony.
You know, it's a circle and it's just where it almost has a little dip, like it's supposed to have some words in there. Are you hearing a message?
Namaste.
Oh, okay, thank you. It's always good when we can have a light moment in council. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Hulenga.
Council, moving on to resolution number twenty twenty-one dash two-five-five. Resolved by the council of the city of Ipsilanti, whereas the ci- city strongly supports safe non-motorized transportation and safe access to recreation opportunities for people of all abilities and incomes. And whereas the need for a safe crossing of I ninety-four at Huron Street for pedestrians and bicyclists is incorporated in the city's master plan, non-motorized plan and five-year approved parks and recreation master plan. And whereas the city has applied for and been awarded several grants to support this project, including three hundred thousand from the DNR NRTF and a hundred thousand from Washtenaw County Parks and Rec Commission. Whereas MDOT has requested an additional one hundred and twenty thousand dollars from the city to help fund the estimated three million dollar project. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council hereby authorizes that the city enter into an agreement with MDOT to fund up to five hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the Huron Pathway Project. And the mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign for and on behalf of the city, subject to the approval of the city attorney.
Support. Some...
I heard it's support, but do we have a motion?
So move.
It's been moved and supported. Comments, discussion?
I have one question.
Yes, Mr. Morgan.
Maybe Bonnie Westler can answer this. I just wanna know, uh, in the creation of the structure, what percentage of it is gonna be in Ypsilanti, the city, and what percentage is gonna be in the township?
So it is going to be about half and half. So the project area is, um, roughly from a little bit, well, it's, depends on how you define the project area and the city side, because we also have the road diet going at the same time. So to outside eyes, it's basically the entire city, but from a very precise accounting standpoint, it is about a hundred feet north of the on-ramp to westbound ninety-four down to James L. Hart Parkway. And, uh, so even though we have acquired, uh, grants which bring our matching total up to, uh, five hundred and twenty thousand dollars, four hundred of those thousands of dollars are grants that have been issued to the city of Ypsilanti. And part of the reason why they're issued to the city of Ypsilanti is because they cannot be issued to the state of Michigan Department of Transportation. So we had to choose city of Ypsilanti, Ypsilanti Township. We had more capacity at the time. So we did the legwork on getting those grants and so we're committing those grants plus a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I believe that the township is also in the process of putting together a similar resolution for their elected officials. Um, it looks like the agenda software kind of ate the table a little bit. But I am happy to provide a, a more legible table if anybody wants to see the, the breakdown there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anything else you wanted to add, um, Ms. Westler?
Um, I believe the memo more or less speaks for itself as well as, and, and I think I covered basically all of it in my answer to Councilmember Morgan. So if anybody has any questions, I am more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or discussion? Uh, Mr. Jones Chance?
Yeah, I've got a question about one of the hundred twenty thousand dollar lines here. So we're requesting five hundred and twenty from MDOT. Uh, four hundred of that is already theirs. Is that correct so far? And then the other hundred twenty comes from us, but we've already gotten that through other grants? Is that how that?
So they're paying quite a bit more than that, um, when all, when we add everything up. So let me, actually, if, uh, the mayor so please is, I'm happy to share my screen. Uh, when I...
Out of the amount that's, out of the five hundred and twenty that's, uh, spent by the city, four hundred of that is already coming from some other outside sources.
Right.
The one twenty that's out of pocket, what, where's that really coming from ultimately?
So that is, um, out of pocket. That is budgeted for in our capital improvements plan and I believe is in the actual budget, budget as well.
So so thirty this year, one seventy-five for next year.
Were you done, Mr. Jones Chance?
I'm mostly thinking out loud. So we'll have we'll have a bit less over. Is that what I'm understanding here? Out of the two oh five? I feel like I've got the order wrong.
Yeah, so here is the official breakdown in a readable Excel format. So this is based on a three million dollar construction estimate. So that's this number here. Watts has, is contributing a hundred and twenty-five. And so that kind of federal money can't match federal money. TAP grants are federal money. So that hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars comes off the top of that three million dollars. So TAP will pay a certain percentage of that remaining two point eight seven five million dollars. Uh, TAP requires a local match of six hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars and change. We have acquired four hundred thousand dollars already in grant monies. And so that leaves about two hundred and forty thousand dollars, uh, needed to make that local match. Uh, the city and the township are splitting that fifty-fifty with a hundred and twenty coming from either of our pockets. Uh, notably though, that doesn't include the street lighting that we will be adding as part of that. Uh, and we're waiting on final costs for that, that, but that should be in the realm of fifty to seven five thousand dollars. Does that help or does that make it worse?
No, that makes sense. So we're requesting the five twenty, but we've gotta put up one twenty-two. Right, okay. This is, this is much better.
We did our best with, uh, getting it into the, the, uh, application, but sometimes, sometimes it doesn't work out.
Well, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Wilcox?
I guess I'm going back to the same question. The, the, the language about the thirty thousand, a hundred and seventy-five thousand being in the budget. And I think what Mr. Brown, Jones Chance was looking at is like, then we're, we overbudgeted for this. If we're only paying a hundred and twenty thousand, we, we have, you know, committed two hundred and five thousand dollars, then we've overbudgeted and we should be fine.
We're in a good place. I wouldn't say that we've overbudgeted because it depends.
Additional costs.
Right. Um, actually, MDOT has pledged, uh, to cover additional costs unless things come in very strangely, which is almost unheard of for MDOT. So we are in an extraordinarily good place, uh, with regards to this construction. Um, but uh, so there's, there's budgeting in the technical sense and then there's budgeting in the bottom line sense. So we budgeted in the technical sense, um, thirty thousand dollars for the design phase. Uh, it will net out as zero to us, but we are going to be billed sixty thousand dollars and spend sixty thousand dollars because we have grant money coming from the outside. So that's the same thing here with this construction. We are going to be billed five hundred and twenty thousand dollars, but only a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of that is going to be real cost to us because we're getting four hundred thousand dollars from somebody else.
We're laundering, we're laundering MDOT's money.
Laundering is such a strong word.
Yes, yes.
All right, all right. Okay, okay. I'll back that up.
Well, seeing no hands, I would just like to say that, uh, I am so happy and delighted that we're finally going to get this pathway. Uh, this has been more than twenty years in the making. And we would start on it and get going and then all of a sudden it would fall apart. We would start again and get going and it would fall apart. And, uh, I don't know how many attempts we made to work at getting this pathway. But I wanna, uh, give kudos to Ms. Westler and to the MDOT team and to Representative Peterson and his office and the county, uh, all in the township, all working together. We're finally getting a pathway where it will be safe for people to walk across ninety-four. Uh, I see people, um, I used to see a gentleman going forth, going back, when I would be coming back or if I was going, whichever way I was going, he was always going the opposite direction. But I was always fearful for him and some others that I would see on that bridge. It was such, it's such a dangerous place. So this pathway is gonna make it safe for walkers and for bikers. And I really appreciate it. The work that you have done, Ms. Wester. Thank you very much. You have, um, really done something that's going to, um, be very, very beneficial to the city and to the township, to the entire area. So I say, say thank you to all that, to you and to all those that worked on this project. Thank you. Mr. Hulenga, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
I'm sorry. Yes, I thought I was...
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yeses and one absence.
Thank you.
Council, moving on to the next resolution. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash two-five-six. Resolved by the council of the city of Ipsilanti, uh, that the Ipsilanti City Council will hold regular meetings at seven PM in the city council chambers located at one south Huron Street, Ipsilanti, Michigan, four eight one nine seven, for the year twenty twenty-two on the following dates. January eleventh, twenty-fifth, twenty-seventh jointly with YPAC. February first, fifteenth, March first, fifteenth, April fifth, nineteenth, May third or tenth, May seventeenth or twenty-fourth, June seventh and twenty-first, July fifth or twelfth, July nineteenth or twenty-sixth, July twenty-eighth with YPAC jointly. August ninth and twenty-third, September sixth or thirteenth, September twentieth or twenty-seventh, October fourth, October eighteenth, November first and fifteenth, December sixth and twentieth. The Ips, the city of Ipsilanti encourages persons with disabilities to par- participate and will provide necessary responsible auxiliary aids and services such as sign for the hearing impaired limited English proficiency services and audios of printed materials being considered at the meeting to individuals with disabilities. Upon two days' notice to the city, individuals with disabilities requiring auxiliary aids or services should contact the city by writing or calling the following city clerk's office, one south Huron Street, Ipsilanti, Michigan, four eight one nine seven, seven three four four eight three dash one one zero zero. All persons are welcome to attend. Additional information may be, may be obtained at the city clerk's office and written comments be sent to the city clerk's office at the above listed address.
So move.
Port.
It's been moved and supported. Discussion, comments?
Council, if I could give just a, a bit of explanation for the highlighted areas and then the dates, the two dates. Um, I pushed the January, uh, the initial January date back to the, um, second, uh, Tuesday in January, uh, being that the first Tuesday will be the first day that we're back from break. This gives staff and council a little bit of time with their families during the holidays. Um, going down to the May third, tenth and May seventeenth, twenty-fourth. Uh, May third has a potential for a special election, so I wasn't certain if council would like to just err in the side of caution and go with that, uh, second, uh, Tuesday. And then push the other one back to the second, um, or the fourth, um, Tuesday in May. July, it would be following the holiday for the first Tuesday, so potentially move it to the, um, second and then the fourth. The August dates were of course pushed back to the second and the twenty-third because of the primary. Um, the September dates, the, if you go with the thirteenth and twenty-seventh, it would be providing, uh, it would go to the second and the fourth because of the, um, Labor Day holiday. So if, um, I don't know how council would like to go through this, if they would just like to make a friendly amendment and how, how they would like to proceed with those, uh, schedules.
I would like to make a friendly amendment. I'd like to make a friendly amendment to, uh, move the schedule to May tenth and twenty-fourth, uh, July twelfth and twenty-sixth and September thirteenth and twenty-seventh.
Councilmember Morgan, do you agree to that, uh, friendly amendment?
I'm wondering why so specific. Um, I guess...
There's a lot of dates for all of those.
Okay, he chose all the days that he think we should have. Amen. No, uh, I, 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 I'll, I have to be, I have to be there. So I'll, I don't have any, um, any, any, uh, any additions. That's cool. Uh, where, whatever. I support.
So I, I'll read those changes. So the May dates will be May tenth, May twenty-fourth, July dates will be July twelfth, July twenty-sixth. September dates will be September thirteenth and Sept- September twenty- September dates will be September thirteenth and September twenty-seventh.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilcoxen made that very easy for me.
It has been moved and second for friendly amendment. And you have heard the date change in dates, all those, and they, is that, has to be, a friendly amendment has to be roll call?
Friendly amendments do not require a vote.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. I thought they did.
Hostile amendments require a roll call.
You say what's that?
I said hostile amendments require a roll call.
What it is? Well, we're not being hostile tonight, so.
Steve, you made it funny.
Okay, well, any other further discussion? Okay, seeing that, Mr. Halinga, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, one absence. Council moving on to the next resolution, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash two five seven, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti. Whereas starting January first, twenty twenty-two, the Ypsilanti City Council and all city board and commissions will be required to begin meeting in person. And whereas the daily cases of COVID nineteen are raising throughout the state, and whereas daily rates in Washtenaw County are also continuing to increase with the majority of cases located in the four eight one nine seven and four eight one nine area codes. And whereas in order to safely operate the city, the Ypsilanti City Council, which is to maintain the ability to meet virtual, virtually for all city bodies, both elected and appointed. And whereas Senate Bill seven oh five would amend the Open Meetings Act to provide local jurisdictions the ability to meet virtually until March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Whereas SB seven oh five has been referred to Committee on Local Government, now therefore be resolved that the city council of the city of Ypsilanti strongly urged the Michigan State Legislature to approve Senate Bill seven oh five and for Governor Whitmer to sign the bill into law. Be a further result of the city council of the city of Ypsilanti direct city clerk to apply this approved resolution to the Michigan Senate Committee on Local Government, Michigan Senate, the Michigan House, Governor Whitmer.
Or support.
Been moved and supported. Discussion, questions? I ask Mr. Halinga to, to prepare this resolution in that the number of cases in the state of Michigan is going up. There were up to seven thousand new cases daily. And there doesn't seem to be, you know, they don't seem to be going down. And it has been predicted or suggested or determined that we would be, cases would, we would be in a high state of infection through March, that we're in a, a new surge and that this surge is going to, would could possibly last through March. So I, and Senator Irwin had a bill, and I believe it's still in committee. Councilmember Somerville, has that bill been brought out of committee?
The bill has not moved and I'm afraid it's probably gonna die there. But I shouldn't say that and ruin the sentiment, but, um, sentiment. But yeah, it's, I don't see the chair of that committee bringing it up for a hearing. And I don't see it passing in both chambers. But it's a good bill, obviously. My boss introduced it. It's just unfortunate that the people who could help protect us are in charge.
Okay, thank you. I still feel that, you know, we need to support the bill.
Absolutely.
Definitely. I would like to add, not only send it to those that were, are listed in the resolution, but also send it to all of the committee members. If we, but does that have to be a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay, well, I propose a friendly amendment that this, this resolution be sent also to committee members.
The chair of the, of the body can't make a, make an amendment, a motion, so it has to be from someone else.
Okay, that's true. Thank you.
So the Michigan Senate Committee on Local Government, that's not who you're wanting to send it to? There's somebody else?
I want to send it to the committee where this, where this bill is sitting.
That's the committee.
Okay, so I thought, yeah, I thought that was covered in the, the language that's there.
No, to all of the members of the committee is what I'm asking for.
I think it, based on the way the language is, I think it will.
The question is whether it goes, whether with that designation, it goes just to the chair of the committee or whether it goes to every member of.
It says the Senate Committee on Local Government. It doesn't say the chair.
Okay.
So it would be, the, the resolution would be mailed to that committee. The, the clerk who runs that committee would provide it to all the members.
All right. So it would be provided to every member?
Yeah, that's, if you, if you actually look at the, when, when bills are discussed or we forward resolutions, that is provided in the actual documentation from that committee. So if I, if you look in there, you'll see, because we, we provide a cover letter, you'll see what the cover letter says, and then that, and it will, there'll be provided the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion or questions about this resolution?
I think it's a great idea. But the continual increase in these numbers, and every time I think that Michigan is in a good spot, then the numbers go up against them.
That's right.
I thought we were doing pretty well relative to the rest of the country, but then not so much.
We were, and then there was that spike and, yeah. And it's not going down according to some of the medical leaders here in Michigan, so.
I think nationally and locally, we operate on assumptions that because people know right, they're gonna do right.
It's the fourth.
You said the word assumption.
I don't assume anything about COVID.
Okay. Seeing no further, no hands or further discussion, Mr. Halinga, please call the roll.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes and one absence.
All right, thank you.
Council, the next item on the agenda is a discussion regarding a community benefits ordinance request for and for affordable housing development on Clark Road.
Okay, Mr. Myers, could you talk to us about this? Unfortunately, I was not, did not get a chance to go over this menu memo before. So if you would talk to us about, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I apologize for the late, the last minute addition to this agenda. We had just gotten the final numbers late yesterday to actually go. And, and the way the community benefits ordinance is written, once a incentive is requested, it triggers a clock that starts ticking. And so I felt that with this meeting being here, and also having to meet all the requirements of the ordinance, that it was best to get it to you now to have, have a, hopefully have no more than a ten-minute discussion and, and kind of explain to you the process moving forward, which will involve having at least one member, interested member of council chair a meeting. And so right now, we, we have a proposal from a developer from Lincoln Campbell Avenue from Minnesota to develop a three hundred and six unit complex on nine forty-five Clark Road. For those of you who don't know where Clark Road is, I'm gonna share my screen real quick.
Know where Clark Road is, but not nine forty-five.
So, so nine forty-five, it's actually the nine forty-five and nine eighty-five parcels right here. So right next to the Green Road Apartments, and, and pretty much at the corner of Clark and La Forge.
Okay, down at that end. Okay. Now, Joe, if you could help me, where is, I see, is that nine eighty-five or four, eight ninety, eight forty-five?
It's, it's both par, both parcels, eight forty-five and eight ninety-five. I've called it eight ninety-five just because in some places this doesn't address.
Okay, where does, where does, in that area, I know some of that is city, some is township. Where does, how far over does the city go?
Just north of Clark Road is township. Just east of La Forge Road, that's township. Everything south of Clark, west of La Forge is, is city.
Okay.
Okay, this is zoned properly for that use. It's still its own multifamily dwelling. And I'll kind of leave my, my, my screen up and I'll pull up the letter right now, just so everyone can see it. I do think that does mean you get to see some of your faces, so I'm sorry. But so, the three hundred and six unit complex, one hundred and fifty-four units would be a family affordable. One hundred and fifty units would be senior affordable. Ninety percent of the one, two and three bedroom units would be at sixty percent area median income and ten percent would be at forty percent area median income. Now, the way that the housing, housing has been developed calculates affordable is based on Washtenaw County. And so they take Washtenaw County's numbers, and then they took the sixty percent and they based it back to room. And so there's two different calculations. There's number of people in a family and, and by bedroom. And so at sixty percent area median income for Washtenaw County, the rents for a one-bedroom would be one thousand one hundred and eighteen, two-bedroom would be one thousand three hundred and thirty-seven, and three-bedroom would be fifteen hundred and forty-one dollars. At forty percent AMI, it would be seven hundred and nineteen for a one-bedroom, eight hundred and fifty-eight for a two-bedroom, and nine hundred and seventy, nine hundred and eighty-seven for a three-bedroom. The developer is requesting five percent of shelter rents as a payment in lieu of taxes. I think the mayor is the only one on this call that's ever actually approved a pilot. And so what a pilot essentially is, is instead of paying regular property taxes, the city can offer a payment in lieu of tax, which is a percentage of the shelter rent. And a shelter rent is rent minus utilities. So we've done some calculations based on the rents that they are charging. And the city assessor has estimated that, that the pilot, if this were just to be developed as a, as a, as a housing apartment complex, they would pay about one million and forty-nine thousand dollars in taxes. But with a five percent pilot, you're looking at about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in taxes. Now, the city only collects about forty percent of the taxes that are collected. However, that does equal out to a twenty-four million, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and eleven dollar tax incentive as defined by, or a tax, a, a benefit as defined by the Community Benefits Ordinance. Um, does anyone have any questions on that before I continue? And please hit the raise hand function because I can't see everyone. All right, I'm looking, oh, Brian?
Yeah, so there's the fact, so this is one part of pilot I'm not really clear on. So does the fact that these aren't property tax dollars change how we can allocate them?
No, so this just comes into the city a, as a payment in lieu of tax. So it actually, the other jurisdictions do not collect.
So do we, so how do we treat it when it comes to us?
I would have to ask Reagan. I, I think it's a, it's part of our revenues.
Okay.
Um, anyone else? All right, just to give you an idea, we have, we have issued pilots anywhere from four to ten percent in the past. The most recent Ypsilanti Housing Commission pilot that was granted for the scattered sites and New Park Ridge was at ten percent of shelter rents, not five. Just to give you an idea of what we've done most recently, and that was done in twenty fifteen. So we get to actually trigger the Community Benefits Ordinance. So what that means is, when I'm looking out of this meeting, is to have an interested council member to kind of be, it doesn't have to be nominated at this point, but basically want to let everyone at council know what is, what is, what is coming. I want, I want to hear all your, your comments, but an interested council member needs to kind of step forward and say, I'm interested, I want to be the chair of this citizen, community participation meeting, to notice that for thirty days, which hopefully I can notice it tomorrow. But I believe it has to be noticed with the, with the city council member. Councilmember Morgan, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. I just wanted to know, this is my first time ever hearing of it. And not to say, just because I don't know, is, is, but it said it was a few months at this, this deliberation and stuff been going on. And so I wouldn't feel comfortable being an interested party just now, knowing about it. So we said the, the incentive triggers the community benefits order. Is there a length of time that we have to respond to the incentive? And if that time elapsed, what's the next plan of action?
So the ordinance just says it has to be completed within sixty days. But there has to be a thirty-day window in order to, to notice for the first community participation meeting. I understand this is the first you are hearing of it. The, the, the main issue that we have at this point is just timing. And so the developer would like to get in front of planning commission in December. They would like to have some comment prior to that meeting. So they can actually make any changes at that meeting accordingly. And so like I said, the numbers were fleshed out until yesterday. And so there wasn't much for me to tell you until then. And a lot of that was in the city's end of work, having the assessor try to figure out the value. And so I know that this is the first you're hearing of it. That's why I wanted you to be the first to hear of it in, in a public meeting. So that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
But I have a question. Is there any reason why we're just now hearing about this?
So the reason you're just hearing about this is that we just got the final numbers to actually present to you. So there wasn't, there wasn't anything, and the final site plan just came in, I want to say at the very end of last week. So there wasn't the time that we normally have to actually present this to everyone ahead of time.
So do you think, can I ask, do you, do you think it's best to move according to their timelines in December? Or we take the adequate time to, to push it through our channels and make sure our community is okay with it before we move along?
So from my reading of the Community Benefits Ordinance, once an incentive is requested, we have to start that process. I, the staff no longer can negotiate, well, we couldn't negotiate anyway, based on the ordinance that has to be done through the community. But when an incentive is requested, that process starts.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilcoxen?
Andy's got her hand up.
Okay, I can't, I can't see the screen. Okay.
I just wanted to volunteer to chair the committee. If nobody else is interested.
I would also like to volunteer.
So would I.
Okay.
I don't think we have a lack of interest in this process at all.
No, and I'm glad that we don't. I'm glad that people are eager. And since we have three, three candidates, why don't we just put it to a vote?
Well, so I.
Anyone else interested in sharing it?
So, Mayor, before we do that, I have, I have a comment.
Okay.
Um, so I believe multiple members of council, up, up to three, because four would be a quorum, can actually. Um, so I believe multiple members of council, up, up to three, because four would be a quorum, can actually participate in the community uh process. It would be, who would be the or would be the interested council member. And so if there are multiple people, this is one of the reasons why I wanted to take it to council tonight, because, like I said, once an incentive is, is requested, that starts the clock. And so we need to kind of have it here, uh, but it does take thirty days to actually hold the first meeting, and so.
It, it does appear that there's an interesting council member from each ward, which kind of makes it fair, you know?
True, because we have thirty days, uh, uh, we could actually, they could talk amongst themselves to figure out um who should be chair, we could actually have that nominated in our next meeting. We're doing a little bit of time.
Arm wrestling.
I'm more of a rock, paper, scissors guy.
Yeah, well, you cheated that, I know, yeah.
We will, while you're, we will let you, while you're arm wrestling, do the rock, paper, scissors, then see what you come up with. Uh, if that's agreeable with the council member Somerville, we got the, uh, the two um, Wilcoxon and Jones Chance, if that's the veil, uh, agreeing to that. So, um, council member Somerville.
To rock, paper, scissors?
Oh, no.
I was gonna say, I don't agree with that.
Not to rock, paper, scissors, no, but to, uh, for the three of you to, to talk, and that we would make a decision uh that if you would be willing to uh decide amongst yourselves, uh, who would be chair. Or we can appoint a chair from, we can bring it to council and vote on it, but if the three of you could decide that. And Mr. Wilcoxon, your hand is up.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to add a note here that, uh,
Read yourself, Councilmember Coxon.
I just, I'm trying to take my hand down, I muted myself, sorry. Uh, this property is on the river. Uh, part of that property is on the river, and that last parcel that's in the city, the one-one-one-one is the property of, uh, the Salin and John loss. And so this has potential to be impacted by, uh, dam removal, uh, operations. Um, and so it, there won't have any, uh, buildable property to this, but it will change the, the, the property line on that. And so that's just something I want people to be aware of, um, you know, and I think that, uh, you know, the losses will certainly be participating in the community benefit. Or, agreement for this, so, um, that's all, just want to make that comment.
The developer has been made aware, and he's actually on this call right now.
Oh, okay.
Um, so before-
Mr. Jones Chance? I saw your hand up.
I was, I was just, um, clarifying my understanding of the map. What's highlighted here is all eight forty-five, right?
Um.
If there's eight forty-five and nine forty-five.
So eight forty-five and nine forty, no, so I don't know what that, that, this, the square is, but I said eight forty-five and nine forty-five is the site we're speaking of.
Okay. So not this, whatever that other parcel was?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was gonna say, it looks like you can get a few more units on.
Uh, three, so, uh, three hundred's a pretty dense site. Um, it's actually some of the most dense housing we would have in the city.
And I have to say that, that, that's a very lovely wooded lot right now. What's that?
I said, people can't just live in the woods.
Well, I know, I know, and, and, you know, uh, we're, we're balancing density with, you know, human density with deer density at this point, so.
Um.
Yeah.
So if no one else has anything, I'm gonna continue on with, with the memo, um, and then I also have plenty of time after for, for more questions. Uh, so once that happens, then we have the community participation meeting. Uh, it has to happen later than six P M. Uh, at that meeting, applications will be accepted for the CBO, the official committee. Uh, so within fifteen days of that participation meeting, council needs to appoint the committee. It'll have one council member, one, and five to eight members of the public, with at least three being appointed for the community, community participation meeting. Um, the purpose of the meeting is to identify mutually agreed upon uh benefits mutually agreed upon from the developer, make their own recommendation with the developer. Um, and the committee shall meet at least twice, and council shall act on the recommendation within fifteen days of, of their recommendation. So, like I said, this starts a ticking clock that we, we, we can't stop. Um, now, we could ask for an extension and council could grant it. However, it doesn't, i- i- it does, the start piece uh is really, there isn't an extension of that. Um, so, uh, there needs to be a meeting at thirty days uh from this. Um, to begin this process, obviously, we have multiple interested council members, which makes me very happy. Um, it makes my job a lot easier than, than begging. Um, and just, just to be very clear, um, for the Community Benefits Ordinance, city staff cannot negotiate an incentive requested prior to sending it through this process. It is our responsibility to gather information uh to, to present to you and the public. So, does anyone have any now further questions on anything? Uh, I don't know, AMIs, CBOs, pilots, I think I've given you more acronyms than I ever have. Uh, and so.
I'd like to hear more about the, the entire development.
Okay.
Um, you know, uh, who was the developer? Uh, when would the development start? Um, and when is the anticipated day of it being completed? Um, all of those.
I can answer some of those at this point.
You say what's that?
I, I, I can answer some of those. So the developer is, uh, Lincoln Capital, uh, Lincoln Avenue Capital, throughout Minneapolis, Minnesota. Okay? Um, they're looking to start relatively quickly, um, because they have a shortened option time period, so they only have the ability to purchase property for, uh, for, I want to say, six more months or probably less than that at this point. Um, and so that's, that's the need to actually get, get the deal going. Um, the, the senior apartments will be one large building. The family affordable will be six buildings with units with, uh, I want to say, I'll say, the twenty units, twenty, thirty units in each. Those site plans will be coming out very soon to actually get public input on. Um, and, and I will also be able to share them with, with council uh very soon as well. As far as start and end date, I think the start date would be closer than the end date. It just all varies depending on the community benefits process, right? Because that does take thirty day, uh, sixty days. Um, and it also depends on contractors and, and, and materials and, and everything, and we're in a, um, you know, it, there's so many variables that I don't think we can give you a proper start and end date. I just know they're working on it aggressively.
So these are going to be apartments rather than single dwell, uh, dwelling?
Correct. More along the lines of New Parker, no, not even New Parkerage, say more along the lines of we don't have anything quite like it, right? Because it's, it's kind of, like I said, there's, there's six family units, um, but there's one giant building, so I'd say that the, the large, the senior would probably be a little bit bigger than, than Cross Street Village. Um, and then we don't really have many larger complexes with twenty-five units of affordable housing in the city. Normally, it's the scattered sites, um, and even, uh, even Hamilton Crossing is more like five to, uh, four to eight per building, so.
So will they be in rows like Hamilton Crossing, or you're saying one big, one big building? So. You say West Town?
W- one big building for the senior apartments.
So would it be similar to, uh, Town Center, Town, or Chivester, or would it be on the corner?
Cross Street Village, so where there's, it's like a U-shaped building with a, in the middle.
Okay, so what about the other, um, places?
The other would probably be closer to a River, I mean, uh, River Rain or River Drive Apartments, like, so larger complexes, um, with, with multiple units in them.
Okay. Any other, Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes, a quick question. I know we're at the beginning of this process, but do they have any kind of renderings or anything like that? It sounds like you kind of know generally.
We, we do have, we do have a layout. I have not heard from, uh, uh, I don't know if we're quite ready to, to share it, because they're still working through engineering. I believe they've worked at all the kinks, uh, but there is a rough layout, and that will be presented to the public prior to the kickoff of the meeting.
We're kind of just guessing based on how many units, what it would probably look like, given the footprint it has to be on, yeah, so. It's all probably.
Yes. Any other questions?
I'm not seeing any hands, or. Okay. So.
I, I will be in contact with you three council people, uh, very, very soon, probably as early as tomorrow morning. Um, and, uh, we will get everything set up.
Thanks for the presentation, Economic Director.
Thank you. Uh, so, uh, Mr. Halanga, there's nothing here that we need to vote on?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, so no other questions or, uh, discussion before we move on? Okay, I'd just like to say thank you to, um, the three council people that were eagerly, um, volunteered to be a part of the, of that committee, so thank you, appreciate it. Okay, Mr. Halanga?
Council, the next item on the agenda is a discussion regarding board and commissioners. Um, and it is a ten-minute discussion. I can start the timer now if you would like.
Please do. Okay, Mr. uh, Morgan, you brought this up. Would you like to lead the discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Clerk. Um, I'm gonna take about sixty seconds to throw something out here, um, and I appreciate you entertaining this for me, um. And I think, uh, this came up, uh, I know some nominations for the, um, certain commissions came, the last couple people who, uh, were nominated probably had less than three years in the city. I think the next person had two-point-five years to person tonight. And as I was thinking just about maybe, um, statutes of how, like, like, what it means to be on a commission, um, and after looking through a lot of the commissions online, uh, it's, it's a first, first for our continuous, I want to thank everyone who are participating, um, volunteering their time and energy on our commissions and boards, uh, we couldn't do it, you are the lifeblood of how we get things done here. I, I do think, uh, according to, uh, Article Nine, Section Three of the, of, of the Charter, it, it gives the city council power, um, to build or discontinue um boards and commission as we feel is beneficial to the city. And I do think some, um, especially, and I do want to talk about a few things that we can throw out there. I think the makeup of a lot of commissions, um, are why some of them are ineffective, um, and meeting the needs of our city. Um, I think, again, the lack of, um, participation fully to fully give them the full brunt of what can happen in the personnel, um, skillset, talents, um, um, and dedication, I think. So it was saying that, uh, there's certain parts of the ethic, the Board of Ethics, where we think about not more than three people should be in the same political party. How would I know? I wouldn't know. Are there funds associated with that commission? Um, how do we know? Every year, there's a re- review written by each commission. Do we look at them? Do we determine it? I just think it's time, um, and again, with the Arts Commission, especially with Y-PAC, we just found a little more direction um, about how they operate. And I think other commissions have those same wonders, and I do think we owe it to them to take a uh, assessment of what we have, what we could use more of, and I think it would help us streamline and vet um, qualify, uh, interested parties more. Um, I, I, I think we've talked about this over time, little by little, like we think about the Economic Development Corporation, in order the Revision Park View Board, or the Fire and Civil Service, or the Watershed Council, certain things, um, I'm not saying they're all, um, are not effective, but I want to determine how effective and how we can move on. So, um, I do think I would like to add, if we got to talking about things, I think there should be a minimum requirement of living in our city to, um, volunteer on our boards, and I don't, and I would just say three years, but that's just me throwing it out there. Um, I just wanted to know if council was interested in having some of these conversations. Thank you.
Response from anyone? Um, Mr. uh, Morgan, there is a, um, time, uh, and that, um, that is, a person is supposed to live in the city. Could you help us with that, Mr. Halanga?
A, a resident must live in the city for not less than two years.
Not less than two, that's what I thought, okay. Thank you.
Less.
And.
What part of the charter is that in, Clerk Linger?
I believe that's in the code, give me one second, I'll do it.
I'm looking at it also. I, I, I wouldn't have said some of the things that I said, pardon me, Hannah, Hannah. Thank you for taking time to entertain this, and again, I could be out of bounds saying some of these things, but it's just, um, I think we could help our city by helping our commissions, be a little bit beefier.
Well, you, you are definitely right, correct, uh, uh, Mr. Morgan, in that, uh, our commissions play a large part in, um, in helping the life of the city. So council certainly couldn't do all, um, that the, all that the commissions do. I mean, we could, but it would be certainly overtaxing of council. And, uh, commissions and commission members play a very important part, uh, in the city. So, any other council people? Mr. Wilcoxon?
Uh, thank you. Um, I agree. I mean, you know, that's, uh, I, what I'm seeing here is that we actually have a little uh uptick in, in applications for these, you know, there was a very dry period of people applying to be on these commissions. I mean, in, in one case, we had three people for one seat. I mean, I, I was pretty good. Um, I'm noticing that, uh, you know, as people come up for reappointments, um, there's, there's conversations, uh, among the commission about, you know, what that looks like and how that processes, so there, the the interest is still there. The people that have volunteered are willing to, uh, um, sorry about that, uh, slight point right there. Um, to still participate. And, you know, the one thing that, that we seem to be short on is, is the youth members that, that we've designated for these, and in, in the case of the Sustainability Commission, you know, we had a presentation from SEMIS, which is a Southeast, uh, Michigan Stewart, uh, uh, coalition, that is a, uh, place-based education group that is, is looking to get, um, you know, youth involved in the, in the Sustainability Commission. Um, that might also be a good resource for, um, getting participation, uh, for the other commissions as well. But I think we're doing a whole lot better than when I came on council three and a half years ago, uh, in terms of getting people to volunteer to do this. And, and I do think that, you know, as a liaison to a couple of commissions and, and, you know, um, unofficial standing in some of these things, I've reached out to people who have, who have, um, applied and had conversations with them, and I, I think that we're doing pretty well in that regard, but. So, that's it.
Uh, and speaking of, of youth participation, I was gonna bring this up in the mayor's remark. Uh, we were speaking, uh, Councilmember Jones Chance and I were, uh, speaking on Saturday uh, at the Neighborhood Association, and this comes up often, not just at that in that meeting, but others about youth, and Mr. Wilcoxon just brought it up. And, uh, there have been suggestions that if we give the youth a stipend, that they would be more apt to participate. And I'm not expecting us to make a decision on this tonight, but we have set aside some funds for, um, oh, for grants, for, uh, agencies that work with youth, and, um, I don't know that this is possible, but I, the thought came to me, why can't we use some of that grant? Use some of that grant money to um, pay. Or to give an incentive to our youth um. Commission members, if that's what it's going to uh, to be, just allocate some of that. Uh, that grant money as a grant to the city itself for um, youth um. Participation on our commissions, and we don't have to, if you want to discuss that now, we can, but not, but. I'm just throwing it out there that we can maybe think about it, because we really do need youth participation, so.
I may, um, Mr. Mr. Barr might be able to assist me with this, but. All boards and commissions are volunteer based, so we can't actually pay them. And.
We can't give that, we can't give the youth any kind of incentive?
From what I understand is, these are all volunteer positions, and we are not to pay them. Um, and the two-year qualification is part of the, and during the um. Organizational meeting, resolution number twenty twenty dash two three four. It states the applicability of section and section two on one, it does state a, an individual shall have been a resident of the city for a minimum of two years. Or an individual shall demonstrate ownership interest for a minimum of two years in a business established in the city for a minimum of two years. And then B, exceptions to subsections A one and two of this section shall only be permitted if it is determined by the city council. That a board or commission requires the membership of an individual with a specific position. Knowledge, experience, or expertise not available to another individual who may otherwise comply with the terms of sections A one and two of this section.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so.
Should be, should be about ten minutes now, I would imagine.
It's getting close. You were muted when you first spoke up, so.
Ten minutes right now, so that. We reached.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Okay, if we can move on with the agenda.
Council, the next item is Board and Commission Liaison Reports, first being Police Advisory Commission.
Um. We have a meeting coming up, uh, we have a meeting coming up this Thursday, uh, where YPAC will be talking about um. A presentation on the analytics uh, police traffic stop data, or evidence on bias, uh, we have um, a presentation on that, we'll have a. Some discussion about streamlining the exclamation process, and we'll have, of course, usually the police statistical data from. Police Chief Tony DeJuste, and that's Thursday. November twenty, I think, days, no, two days from now.
Eighteen. The next commission is the Human Relations Commission, and that is Mayor Pro-Tense, so moving on to the Arts Commission.
Yeah, I have nothing, and I think also I was gonna bring this up last time. I have a personal obligation on Thursdays that has basically prevented me from being able to attend. Um, I don't know when we're gonna reevaluate roles, I don't know if it happens next year, just want to throw that out there. If someone else is interested, if someone's interested in swapping, um, Thursday. Evenings are just not something that I'm able to make happen right now.
Okay, thank you for letting us know, thank you.
Uh, next items are Parks and Recreation Commission and Sustainability Commission.
Uh, Parks and Recreation Met, uh, it's fairly straightforward, it was a short meeting, um, I have not. I apologize, but I misplaced my notes for that meeting, um, Sustainability Commission Met, um. I do have notes for that, there was a uh, presentation by uh, SEMIS, which I had mentioned earlier, from Lisa Volker and and Paula Sizemore. They're very interested, and this is something that has been discussed in that that commission for a while, in terms of how we can interact with this group of um. You know, science uh, teachers in the area, this, the SEMIS is is um, located within EMU. Um, and they work with the uh, local schools to do place-based education. Um, and they're very interested in getting um, the students involved with projects in the city. Um, and be that as science or in terms of um, political engagement, you know, and. Uh, one project that has has come up in that conversation is, you know, outreach uh, for meetings around the dam. Um, uh, voter uh, education in terms of going door to door, um. You know, that's the kind of the projects that they're looking forward to, um, and there was great uh, great interest from the Sustainability. Uh, Commission, um, there's also a, a, a group of students from U of M that are working on uh, resilience. And this is a continuation, there's a new group of students, this project has been going for a while, so setting up uh, resilience hubs within the city in which. You know, specific structures in in areas that would be responsive to uh, resident needs in the case of. Um, natural disasters um, or pandemics, um, and so Brian Foley has been involved in in setting up a resilience hub. At Parkridge, um, to to uh, commit supplies in a, in a central location for for COVID and and various other things. Um, this group of students is uh, involved um, in designing these things, and they've got uh, this is the second set of students, these are master students. Um, the, the first set of students did a survey, these people are following up on that. Um, they're doing interviews with people from the Sustainability Commission to to get input on how to engage the. The public in general about these things, so that's moving on pretty well, there was also a conversation with uh. Recycling and Ann Arbor, um, from Brian Winter, Director of Strategies, um, our uh, Director of Public. Public Services, Ron Akers is very involved in that, um, you know, and moving forward with um. Recycling efforts, um. And that. And that's all I have, so.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Wilcox, and where were the students from, I missed that?
Uh, SEMIS works um, with with lots of schools in Southeast Michigan, but um, there's a group. Um, they work with with people in in Ipsal County School District, um, there's also a group in Detroit. Um, that is looking to have kind of a a partnership as well, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just addendum to that, some of the work that they did with this was um, putting together rain gardens in certain places on school properties where there was noticed flooding. And so the SEMIS uh, crew worked with uh, the local teachers to uh, educate the students, and the students implemented these uh, rain gardens to. Mitigate the flooding for some of the athletic fields, so that's one project that that's already been started, so.
Okay, thank you.
Council, the next item on the agenda is HTC.
Um, nothing to report.
Next is Planning Commission and ZBA.
ZBA hasn't met, Planning Commission meets tomorrow.
Moving on to the next section is Liaison Reports, SimCOS.
Uh, SimCOS meeting is coming up.
Next is Watts.
We have a meeting tomorrow.
Uh, Urban County.
Um, Mr. Myers, I believe you attended that last meeting? Or is? Or you already reported on that one?
Yeah, I already reported on that one, so we have a meeting next month.
Right.
Um, DDA.
Um, I'll take it on, we had a special meeting uh, to approve. Applying for a match on main grant, uh, to match on main grants, and then we also approved twenty thousand dollars in construction relief grants to West Cross. We have another meeting on Thursday of this week to discuss, for our annual board retreat.
Friends of Rutherford Pool.
Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, I had a conflict, um, and I haven't had a chance to uh, catch up with the the pool board chair, so I will report on that the next meeting.
Next section is Council Proposed Business.
Okay, um. Let's see. Okay, we'll start with uh, Ms. Simmons.
Actually, I don't have anything today, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan?
Uh, I don't have any business, I just want to say thank you to the vets and the indigenous vets. I have no more thing to say tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Jones Chance?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to um. It wasn't exactly relevant at the time, but um, back to the boards and commissions. You know, that we kind of uh, look at. Maybe it'd be good to pull some of these out every now and then, um, so for instance, you know, not that this is an issue with the, the person we just appointed to HTC, but. You know, people like. Who work for large uh, real estate holders in the city or landlords who are on um, real estate-facing committees. Could be an issue, I mean, not maybe with this individual, but you know, I can just see a situation where an employer puts pressure on an employee to do certain things. Uh, the temptation at least is there, and we should, you know, keep that in mind, so things like HTC, planning, um, ZBA, we might want to be um. Paying a little bit closer attention to things like that, I just wanted to. To call that out, and again, you know, this person's appointed, you know, not that it would be an issue, but. Something for us to keep half an eye out for in the future.
All right, thank you. Um, Ms. Somerville?
Yeah, I guess to follow up on that, because I'm assuming this is about the person that we just appointed, um. And I would just say that anything that would be a conflict of interest, they would have to abstain from in a vote. Which is something that. Was talking, that I thought about and talked to the person who applied about, so, um. Yeah, I mean, I think if we actually looked at everyone's background and career, they probably shouldn't, they have a special interest in the commission that they're applying for. Our planning commission's fault of a bunch of city planners. Um. Anyways, I continue to get complaints about the scooters, I don't know if anybody else is getting complaints about the scooters, but I am. Um, they're not being picked up by the company from the locations that they're at. Um. I don't know, I would have been fine if we didn't have them, honestly, but. Uh, I've seen a few people scooting around on them, I just don't really think it's a huge asset to us. Um, I've been getting more complaints, I don't think I've had one person not complain to me about them, they're usually all complaints that I'm getting.
Hmm.
That's all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wilcox.
Thank you, Mayor, um. Uh, as far as the scooters go, um, I haven't really seen anything, one of the complaints was that they're being parked at the bicycle um. Racks, which is inappropriate, and that's because of instructions from the, the company itself in there. Well, I signed up for this and tried one just for the, you know. Just to know what was going on with it, A, they're really expensive, um, a half-mile jaunt around uh, Depot Town cost me five bucks. Uh, for about a ten-minute ride, um, so I I think that will settle into, you know, people's, you know, but. The, I I've intended to contact the company about, but their, their educational part of that, where it tells people to park them at bike racks, and it's like, no, that, that's not appropriate. They could be near the bike racks, but not, and I just moved, every time I see him parked at a bike rack, I just move, so the complaints are whatever they are, but, um. I was contacted by a, a resident, uh, who's actually in Ward One, but I was on my way past there and happy to talk, talk to this person, she's a new. Resident of the city, she's lived here for two weeks, and she's uh, got some concerns about the alley, so I'll, I'll. Just giving Ron a heads up that I'll be calling him tomorrow about uh, an alley, um. Uh, between Perrin and Ballard behind Pearl, um. The other update i- is just an update for uh, for Penn Dam, um, yeah, as I reported last time, there's, uh, we're waiting for a report from the um. From the engineering firm that is doing the sediment analysis, um, and that is due to the DNR in uh, in January, and so they need to have all of that done and and ready by. Uh, December, when we get that, the plan is to continue on with the uh, uh, the public engagement uh, meeting that we had. Uh, talked about before a town hall that would happen uh, sometime early in the year. Once we have a, a chance to digest that, I've been in contact with the, the public engagement consultant. Um, from Detroit, and I'll be speaking with her again on Thursday. Had a conversation last week, uh, Christopher Jacobs and I met with Rebecca Esselman, who is the Director of the Huron River Watershed Council. Uh, in that meeting, uh, Annie Summerwell was also there with Jeff Irwin and Kirk Prophet, our lobbyist was there. And the discussion was about, uh, you know, how they can facilitate uh, funding. Uh, help us getting funding uh, for this project, um, there's a, you know, a general idea that three million dollars. Um, from the state in various forms would would be very helpful in getting this project to completion. Um, I just want to reiterate that the city voted to commit five hundred thousand dollars to that, um, we are currently. Um, submitting documentation to HRC to go in with the reports um, to the DNR. On the city's involvement in this, and so when the grant was awarded, the city was uh, required to put up matching funds. And I just want to point out that those matching funds are not necessarily dollars out of the budget. Uh, so much as staff time is is included in that matching fund, and actually, my time has been uh, included in that matching fund. Um, uh, it's interesting that I, I get billed that uh, minimum wage, so um, just to let you know, if you apply for grants, um, we're not that worth it as much as city staff. Um. But that comes out to a, a chunk of change, and so we were on, uh, we were supposed to be committing thirty-three thousand dollars to that, but with the city staff time and my time. That's considerably lower than that, so, um, so we're looking forward to hearing more about the, the funding at the state level that could uh, facilitate this project. Um, and, you know, we're waiting to hear from the, the engineering firm on the results of the sediment uh, chemical profile, and that seems to be the. The biggest issue for, for a lot of people that uh, are tracking this, so, um, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Um, I believe the, the mayor's comments come next. Yes, I do have an eye, um. I do apologize for not having this for the last, the last meeting, but it did slip me. Uh, last Thursday was Veterans Day, and I do have a proclamation that I would like to read, um. And I'll start with that and then have some other comments, um, Veterans Day, whereas in nineteen nineteen. Excuse me, President Woodrow Wilson first proclaimed November eleventh as Armistice Day. And whereas in nineteen fifty-four, President Dwight D. Eisenhower signed into law designating November eleventh. designating November 11th being Veterans Day. And whereas the veterans of the United States of America deserve to be held in particularly high regard on Veterans Day and always for their bravery and selfless commitment to service. And whereas the United States has approximately 20 million veterans, which includes nearly 600,000 living in Michigan. And whereas the city of Itsalanti is proud to be the home of many honorable veterans and service people to be celebrated and congratulated on Veterans Day. And whereas Eastern Michigan University held two ceremonies on November 11, 2021, to celebrate veterans, veterans, heroes from the past and present who reside within the city of Itsalanti. And whereas one of the many veterans recognized was Washington Hawkins, who was born into slavery in Kentucky, escaped at the age of 19 and settled in the city of Ipsalanti. Whereas Mr. Hawkins joined the 102nd USCT in 1865, and USCT is the United States Color troops. Help liberate South Carolina and return home to Ipsalanti after the war. And whereas it is our shared responsibility to honor and protect our veterans, just as they have made a brave and selfless commitment to service. Now, therefore, I, Lois Allen Richardson, Mayor of the City of Itsalanti, on behalf of City Council, do hereby recognize and appreciate the contributions and sacrifices of the veterans of the United States of America for their outstanding service while working to ensure the safety of their community and country, given under my hand and seal of the City of Itsalanti, November 16, 2021. And I want to say that Mr. Mark Higby asked me to take part in the ceremonies that were happened there at Highland Park on last Thursday. Councilmember Will Coxon and Councilmember Somerville were both in attendance. I thought the services were were quite interesting and informative. We do have approximately 30 black Civil War veterans that are buried in Highland Park. I do know that Mr. Barry LaRue, who was once on council, is working on a project to bring more recognition to the black veterans from the Civil War that are buried there. But it was, I thought it was both there, the, well, it ended up being one ceremony. Only one person came for the second go-round. So we just shared with them, but I thought it was a very good ceremony, nice ceremony, and like I said, I thought that I thought that it was very informative. We had some people there that just came to be a part of it, but I think they are going to be looking into some of the veterans that whose names were called, if they might be possible relatives, but we just do, I do say thank you to our veterans, both those that are living and those that have passed on for the service that they gave to our country. And I do recognize and acknowledge that veterans have played, and our active military personnel now is playing a very important part in maintaining our our freedoms and our democracy. And I think that we need to to support them and pay homage to them wherever we can and however we can. So I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything to or about the veterans. Okay, seeing none. This morning, I, one of the first things I did when I looked in my, picked up my phone, I saw a a text from a an employee of YCS School District, and there was a young man that died yesterday. I don't know if if anyone else has heard, but the he was, I did talk with someone else this afternoon. He had gone out to try out for the basketball team, and while they were practicing or on the court, he collapsed, and they were unable to revive him. He didn't, he never regained consciousness. He was a 17-year-old kid. His name was Jalen Mitchell. And I found out that Jalen does have a, does have a twin brother, and they're, they would be graduating in May or June of this, of next year. So let's just keep them, keep YCS as a whole, particularly YCHS. The students there were grief counselors there all day today, but I'm sure that it's gonna take more than one day of grief counseling to help some of our students through that. And as if we all remember that, we know that all of the students at YCS schools are not do not live particularly in the city, but a number of the students that go to school there, they are ours. And even though the district is separate, functions separately, I still see us very close together, and we have to remember that the students there are ours. So please keep that family in your thoughts and prayers as we go forth, and not only the the family, but also the students. Remember, many of them will be, I think this will be traumatic, and they will be going through the grief process for some time, so I wanted to share that. The other thing is, and I'm putting this before council, would anyone besides myself be interested in promoting a citywide toy and clothing drive for the holidays coming up? There are, I would like to see us offer some support to a few of the agencies that operate and serve our families here. There is a group, there are two or three agencies, Eastern Michigan University and a couple of other agencies are working with them in conjunction with Ipsalanti Community Schools that are funding a drive, and I would like to know if council would be in favor of joining them, and there are a lot of hurting families in our, in our city. And even though we're coming out of the pandemic, but with all of the inflation and still the rise of COVID, I just feel like we need to be doing what we can to to help our families. So I'm putting that there, and council can give aye or nay if they would, if they think that's something that we can, that we, that as a city could take on. And also definitely, if we have enough to pour into, also work along with Toys for Tots, but to work along with this this group that is raising, collecting toys and gifts for the residents. They're focusing pretty much on Park Ridge, but my thoughts are adding some other agencies, mentor, men, organizations, mentor to youth, corner health. Oh, gosh, the schools, YCS schools, and just wherever we would be able to to offer some help. So I'm putting that out there. And that's pretty much all that I have for tonight.
Hey, Council, the next item will be communications from the city man.
Good evening. I don't have any. I don't have a report at this time. The CIL is coming out very soon, so a lot of things will be in there. After reviewing that, if council has any questions for me, feel free to contact me. One of the things I will do is get with staff to see what's going on with the the scooters. That is, that is a little frustrating. I had a couple calls as well, so I will try to find out a little bit more about that and report back to council. But other than that, I don't have a report in meeting with the Board of the Border Trail Committee, which is comprised of Commissioner Peterson, Jefferson, M.D., people trying to confirm that project, also meeting about the I-94 Bridge project, just trying to finalize that project. Those both are going forward. Also lately, been meeting with the county-wide committee talking about how we could utilize some of the ARPA funds to maybe do some work on Washtenaw. So we've been picking up the Reimagine Washtenaw project again. It's gonna come to Watts as well, so that committee will hear about it. And so we're just busy down here at City Hall. Right now, it is, it was, as well, it still is, I should say, open taking renewals for marijuana applications. According to the ordinance, they have to apply annually, and they have through December to apply, so the office is busy with that. And my office is preparing for the holiday party for city employees. Looking forward to that. We will I think that's it. That's it for tonight, in the interest of time, but there will be a lot more for you in the CIL so that you can see exactly what is going on here in City Hall in in the city manager's office, but I'll leave it for that, at that for now. If you have any questions, you know how to reach me. If you want to set up a one-on-one, I'm available for that as well. And that's it.
Council, the next section is communications. There's three items under that section. Provided the dates, the Election Commission will meet for redistricting. It's December 1st at 9:00 a.m., December 12th at 1:00 p.m., December 15th at 5:00 p.m. As we all know, we had to return to in-person meetings starting January 1st, 2022, so we will meet two more times virtually and then back to in-person. The budget and summary of activities from Walmart are included there. That leads us to the next section in Germany.
Okay.
Entertained emotion.
The meeting is adjourned, yeah.
Good night, everyone.